I present Dan Shaq.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for the introduction. If you know anything about Alan Simpson, he wanted to become “We Have No Choice.” It was a great afternoon. Thank you so much for the invitation. It’s a really fantastic event. It’s a really uniquely Maine event. And I’m still sort of new to Maine, but if you don’t mind, I’ll just open with a couple of quick anecdotes about uniquely Maine political things that have happened to me in the past couple of years. So we moved in 2012 and just before the presidential election at the end of the summer. So I was only in Mount Vernon about three months. We vote in Mount Vernon at the community center, which is a beautiful old building right on the edge of Minnehonk Lake. It’s George, George Kuntz. It’s a gorgeous little spot. So I worked that day, that Tuesday. I went to vote, my first vote in Maine, in this tiny little community center with the lights coming out across the lake. It was beautiful, wide plank boards. It was out of Norman Rockwell. It was amazing. So I walked in and, of course, there was a set, a table of mostly older women were sitting and they’re going to check me in and so forth. And I just looked around and I thought, “This is just, I can’t believe I’m here in Maine.” So I walk up to vote and I wanted to tell them who I was, of course. You know, “I’m Dan Shaq, just moved here from Pennsylvania. We live up on the North Road.” And they looked at us, looked at me and said, “We know. How’s Colby going?” And then, of course, anyway, everybody knows everybody in Mount Vernon. Last winter, my brother came to see me during Christmas break, right after the holiday, right after Christmas. And he had, as all visitors do, they want to go to LL Bean. So I took him to LL Bean. He had to return something. So he, there was a long line for the returns like right after Christmas. So I stuck him there for a few minutes. They said, “I’ll be back in a few minutes.” So I saw him 15 minutes later walking down the hall. I said, “How’d it go?” He said, “It was great. I had a great time.” I said, “How’d you get a great time standing in line?” He said, “Well, I talked to this guy. He’s a really smart guy. He’s really cool. Some of you probably know where I’m going with it. Let’s talk to this guy for as long as time. He’s a really nice guy. Seemed really smart. Oh, and by the way, here he is, walking right towards me. This is the guy.” And of course, it’s Angus King. Pat didn’t know, but of course, I know Angus King. He had a flannel shirt on and a sort of old brown vest. And he stood in line with Pat to return his boots. But I will say that we’re about 20 years old. Anyhow, our chat today. So what we’ll talk about today? This is a little bit about me. I’m at the Gulf Farbe Center in Colby College. I study elections primarily, as David said. And I have found that I seem to know less and less about elections as this year has moved along. And I was interviewed a little while back on Fox where I was asked in the end of the interview, “Well, how will Maine go? How will Maine go during the general election?” And I admitted to them at that point, “Well, I have no idea. I can hardly make heads or tails of what’s going on.” So that’s inspired me to put together a set of issues that are really different this time around. Some things that are happening that are going to surprise us, or I should say, maybe some things that will break conventional wisdom. So let’s go through. First off, a politics, one definition of politics is poly, which means many, of course, and tech is a blood-sucking creature. So that’s one definition. The other definition is the, it is the struggle over this allocation of scarce resources. It is a battle over public policy. So through the millennia, we have established rules, rules that seem to guide strategic behavior. There’s one from Machiavelli, of course, “A prudent man should always follow the path trodden by great men and imitate those who are most excellent.” George Washington Plunkett was a party boss around the turn of the century in New York City. “He must study human nature and act accordingly.” Of course, Chris Matthews has his own rule span. David Horowitz, “The art of politics, the aggressor usually prevails,” on and on. Tip O’Neil, “All politics is local.” And of course, my favorite. There are a lot of rules. I’m not sure if this is a rule or just an attitude. Jim Carver, of course, from Bill Clinton’s 1992 campaign. There are, speaking of the 1992 campaign, there are considered to be fundamentals. There are issues that drive the outcomes of elections. I suspect all of you know the phrase, and this is where it came from, right? So we’re looking at, “It’s the economy, stupid.” In 1992, it was a very turbulent campaign. There was a lot going on. It was Ross Perot and of course, some of George Herbert Walker Bush and Bill Clinton. And it was a very chaotic race, but in the war room, the Clinton war room, they wrote on the wall, “It’s the economy, stupid.” So they were focused on that as the fundamental. But this is interesting. This is actually the, the post from the wall. I think it’s interesting that it says, “Don’t forget about healthcare.” This was in 1992. But we all focus on, “It’s the economy, stupid.” Fundamentals are important to this day. After the 1992 election, the Republican Party came together to take a look at the fundamentals. How could Mitt Romney lose? They thought all along that this was in the bag. Barack Obama was not that popular. But they lost that election. Of course, they lost it rather handily. Why? There were some fundamental issues that they missed. This quote here, by the way, is from a section of this report, Growth and Opportunity Project, from the Republican National Committee, “Dealing with Hispanic Voters: How Republican Candidates Should Confront Hispanic Voters. Should Be a Party of Tolerance and Respect. We need to ensure that the tone of our message is always reflective of these core principles.” I think some of you know where I’m going on this. So scholars have sacrificed the forest of trees to try to figure out the fundamentals. What is it that drives elections? What we find, or at least there’s a scholarly perspective called the minimal effects argument. In short, many scholars argue that short-term effects, like the debate in 1984 when Walter Mondale admitted he’d raise taxes to Mike Dukakis in the tank, many of you understand, the Swift Vote Veterans for Truth campaign, Sarah Palin, even the 47 percent comment from Mitt Romney, in the end, really don’t matter. The minimal effects argument is that the fundamentals drive the campaign. What happens, the short-term effects are really not that important. It’s a very controversial position. It would be a real surprise to a lot of candidates and campaign consultants who make a lot of money in this business to say that what they do really doesn’t matter. And then, of course, there is the science of forecasting. We can determine the outcome of elections based upon trends, based upon attitudes, perceptions, and measures. Two of the most important are the state of the economy and the perceptions of the state of the economy, or the perceptions of how well the nation is doing. And what happens is scholars and other pundits can often predict the outcome of an election within just a couple of percentage points 10 months before the campaign is over. And they’ll use these fundamental demographic, economic bits of data to reach the outcome. So how are the rules, the fundamentals, and the forecasts holding up these days? What do we know and not know about presidential campaigns? Let’s start with an important one. Big money rules, right? After Citizens United, an important, very important Supreme Court decision, we all assumed that big money would become bigger debt and that super PACs would rule the day, right? Barack Obama writes, “You now have the potential of 200 people deciding who ends up being elected president.” We all assumed that money would be the driving force in this election. Here’s fundraising troubles for Donald Trump. Those little blips at the top are the PACs. It’s easy to see that Donald Trump has got there without super PACs, without raising money. Now, it’s a little bit different than the next slide, right? This is Bernie Sanders’ totals. Two different sources, but neither of these campaigns have had to rely upon these huge super PACs, these huge donations, the 200 that Barack Obama was talking about. Next slide, please. Bernie Sanders has raised all his money in small donations. We all know that, right? He’s raised 65 percent of his money from folks like the rest of us sending in smaller checks. PAC contributions only make up almost 0 percent of his overall total. So what’s the role of money in campaigns? So right off the bat, what political scientists and pundits assumed about the 2016 election is already out the window, that money would be the driver. Now, we’re going to head into the general election and we know that Donald Trump is going to start fundraising and so forth. But to this point, I think it’s fair to say that that rule, that big money from a small group of folks is going to rule the day. There’s another slide. Let me show you. This is super PACs by January 2016. The left bar, 103 million, went to Jeb Bush. So how far did Jeb Bush get? I was talking to a reporter about the time that Iowa was going on, right about the time when he had all this money. He was a reporter from CNN and he said to me, “I’ve been through Iowa for two months. I’ve never run into a Bush supporter.” That’s $103 million super PAC. So, all right, so rule number one, I hope we can agree. It’s surely up in the air. It didn’t pan out. Let’s see what’s in it. The invisible primary. Now, what’s the invisible primary? The invisible primary, next slide, please, is essentially an exploration of what happens before Iowa and New Hampshire, right? Early endorsements in particular. It is attention by the media. It is fundraising. And it is endorsements. The scholars that wrote the party’s size, a very influential book, said endorsements are key. FiveThirtyEight, right, which many of us pay attention to, is a website dedicated to tracking campaigns, said the same thing. Endorsements matter. So the invisible primary. Rule number two, the invisible primary is almighty. Next slide. Well, you can’t see this very well, I’m sorry to say, but the big blue dot blob at the top is the number of endorsements for Hillary Clinton. The small blue is for Bernie Sanders. I think the next slides will help. Let’s do it this way. Here’s Marco Rubio’s endorsements. They’re all, what I did is I’ve listed all the House members, senators, or governors that have endorsed Marco Rubio. Next slide, please. There’s Donald Trump’s. Next slide. There’s Hillary’s endorsements. Next slide. And these. Next slide. And these. Next slide. And there’s Bernie’s. So do, does the invisible primary, which was thought to be so important, endorsements by public officials, by the media, early attention, do they rule the day? I don’t think so. I think rule number two. Let’s move on. Okay, front-loading. What is front-loading? Front-loading is this process where early primaries and caucuses quickly move second-tier candidates out of Maine. It’s quickly to winnow the field down, right? When I was in Pennsylvania, I was on statewide election reform task force. And one of the ideas that we all pushed was that move up Pennsylvania’s primary date so we would finally matter. Because election after election after election, within a week or two of the primary caucus process, the thing was over. The die was cast. Pennsylvania never mattered. Next slide, please. I’m not sure that’s true. I suppose that the Sanders campaign can imagine a scenario where he could prevail, but he’s not getting out either way. We know that week after week after week, he continues to stay in. And even on a Republican side, it didn’t happen quickly. So this front-loading, this idea that early primaries and caucuses winnow the field quickly, that’s changing. The change, by the way, in 2008, when Hillary Clinton stayed in with Barack Obama, almost all the way to the convention, I think our understanding of front-loading has changed. I think a lot of states are saying, “No, let’s just stay where we are.” In fact, no, why not be towards the end of the process? Why not be the great prize in the end? The winnowing out no longer happened. Oh, and this is just a quick slide about, okay, so Sanders is staying in, but he’s also winning a lot of these states, as we know. Did he win two on Tuesday or one and a half?
Kentucky, it was 1,000 votes in Hillary’s.
Hillary won. So Hillary won. I call that one and a half. So he’s staying in. And you know what’s interesting about this is we all assumed that voters would move away from second-tier candidates as a calendar progressed. Why bother? Well, they’re sticking with Bernie. Of course, that’s the concern, right? The concern is that if he stays in and he keeps pushing and pushing and pushing, she may very well win, but it’s been tough. And I think a lot of Democrats believe that her negatives, which have risen so dramatically in the past four or five months, are not being pushed up by the Republicans, but rather by Bernie. So it’s a great question as to whether or not he should fold up his tent now. Okay, so next. Republicans are values voters. This is a famous book. Thomas Frank, who, by the way, has another book out about liberals, but this is a book about Republicans and conservatives. This is about 10 years old. And what he argued is, is that economic concerns for Republican voters has been dependent by values. People are concerned about their economic well-being, but also about social values. And what he argues in this book, in Kansas, where he grew up, whenever there was an economic disturbance, when there were problems, there was higher unemployment, or there was factories being shut down, that the voters would rally to the Democratic ranks. And what he finds in Kansas now is that when these things happen, they rally to Republican ranks. And that there’s been a concerted effort by Republican elites to push social issues like gay marriage and gun ownership and school prayer and so forth. So we’ve come to learn that those are really important values for Republicans. So these are Republican voters asked in 2008, right, “How important are social issues to you?” And so if we add up someone important and very important, we’re at 74 percent. A little bit of empirical evidence to suggest that. So we have this idea that Republicans are concerned about values. And obviously, that’s Ted Cruz’s path to the presidency. At least, he thought it would be his path to the presidency. Ted Cruz has followed the social conservative track. Next slide, please. So as the campaign progresses, folks like Ted Cruz and his handlers and other Republicans say, “Well, surely, a candidate that has such, I think, how do we say, social value challenges as Donald Trump wouldn’t progress through the process, wouldn’t continue on. His divorces, his positions on abortion, his use of foul language.” That’s a picture on the far right. Where’s the values issue this election? Where are the value voters this election? Is it true that Republican voters are deeply concerned about, about social values? With Donald Trump as a candidate, I think that’s a rule that we’ve got to really raise and go, we’ve got to really think through. Okay, the next one. Number five, Ronald Reagan’s 11th commandment. We’ve heard about this. This idea that Republicans should not attack other Republicans. You need to know that the Republican primaries and caucus, the nomination process, has historically been rather, rather calm and smooth. And of course, the Republicans have tended to lean in the end towards the establishment of candidates. It was very rare that was deep, serious infighting in the Republican Party. Okay, we saw that for the first time, probably, between John McCain and George Herbert, I’m sorry, George W. Bush in 2000 in South Carolina. It’s a famous example of things getting really bad. Generally speaking, Republicans seem to be a happy family, where they don’t fight with each other. Well, of course, Jeb Bush is low-energy. We know that. We’ve heard that. But it’s a lot worse than that, okay? Go ahead. These are just some of the things that Donald Trump has said of other Republicans. That terrible comment about Carly Fiorina’s face to suggest that George Bush was responsible for 9/11. Surely, that would be the end of a Republican candidate in a Republican primary and caucuses, taking on Megyn Kelly of Fox News. Surely, that would be the end of Donald Trump. Over and over and over. Ben Carson and of course, lying Ted Cruz. It’s gone the other way as well. These are some of the comments that other Republicans have said about Donald Trump. “Unfit to be president. A barking carnival act. Cancer on conservatives. Dangerous Rand Paul. Donald Trump is delusional narcissist in an orange-faced windbag. A speck of dirt is way more fun than being president.” These are, these aren’t fringe officials. These are senators and governors. Of course, Lindsey Graham cannot tolerate Donald Trump. Now, you don’t want to make America great again, tell Donald Trump to go to hell. He’s a bully. Punch him in the face. Punch him in the neck. So this, this rule that Republicans would do their business in a civil, respectful manner is a rule that we’ve come to understand and imagine. A few exceptions through the years, again, 2000. That’s hugely changed. That’s up there. Okay, another one. For a long time, folks have said, scholars have said, that we’re seeing an end to ironclad partisanship, that Americans are moving towards the middle. They’re becoming independents. I’m not sure you can see the trends very well. This is from Gallup poll. But that 42 at the top is, that’s the number of Americans who consider themselves, a percentage of Americans who consider themselves independent, right? They’re not Democrat and they’re not a Republican. So scholars have started to wonder whether or not partisanship is fading. Next slide, please. Well, pay attention, if you don’t mind, to the bottom trend, which extends things out a little longer, all the way through 2014. If we ask independents where they lean, partisanship reemerges, right? So they might say they’re partisan, I’m sorry, they’re independent, but they vote in a very partisan way. Many independents say they are independent, but vote consistently Republican or consistently Democrat, over and over and over. So it might be out of fashion to say that you are a partisan. When it comes to your behavior, right, one is a sort of an attitude and another is a behavior, there’s a different story. But there’s more to it than that, if you don’t mind. This is an important study that was done by the Pew Research Center. And I’ve got a few slides on this. It explains a lot of what’s happening in America these days, if you ask me. And it is, there are three figures that chart the position of voters on 10 key issues from 1994, 2004, and 2014. The white line is the average position. And the color shade is what’s called a variance, the spread around that average position. So what you’ll see is that the average position of voters, Democratic and Republican voters, on 10 key issues is pretty close in 1994. That seemed to be a contentious year, right? That was Newt Gingrich and Contract on America and so forth. And then, even by 2004, which we thought was a very contentious time because that was the war in Iraq and George Bush and being a very polarizing president. And then when we get to 2014, we’ve got that the average position of Republican and Democrats have spread. And those clustered around that have also spread. So there is a deep growing gap between what Republicans believe and what Democrats believe. It’s emotional. It’s deep. It’s what’s called an affect. That is to say, this charts what we think of the other side, right? Whether or not the other side, if you’re a Democrat, are the Republicans a threat to our nation? If you’re a Republican, are the Democrats a threat to the nation? So only 16 percent thought that in 1994 for the Democrats and only 17 percent for the Republicans. That number has grown, has doubled in the past few years. Each side is now convinced that the other side is not only seriously off on the wrong rail, but they’re a threat. And what happens is, back to the issue of civility, what happens is, if you think the other side is a threat, somehow you figure out they don’t deserve respect. They don’t deserve to be heard. Their ideas are just freaking crazy. And if that’s true, say what you like about them. All bets are off. One of the interesting findings from that study, from that Pew study in 2014, is the number of Americans who worry about someone in their family marrying someone. It’s upwards of 25 percent of partisans, 25 percent of Republicans. To be honest, Republicans worry a little bit more about their kids marrying liberals than liberals marrying conservatives. But it’s really about 25 percent. About a quarter of those people who consider themselves strong partisans don’t want somebody in their family to marry someone on the other side. We’ve never seen that before in America. Something is going on regarding our attitudes towards the other side. And all this is happening while the number of people who say they are independent is going up. So we have these contradictions. So that Americans are less partisan is really not true. That’s an idea, that’s a rule that we’re going to really check and think through. And I think this marriage example is probably pretty good. This, sticking with the partisanship real quickly, this is the average ADA scores, Americans for Democratic Action, for members of the House and Senate. And it goes from 1950 to 2010. It is essentially a measure of how liberal you are. And what you can see for the first three or four decades on this chart is that there was a lot of moderates, right? There were a lot of Margaret Chase Smiths. There were a lot of conservatives or Republicans that could meet the Democrats halfway and vice versa. Beginning by the 1990s, we have this division. And I think what’s most important about this, okay, we’ve got, we’ve got this division between conservatives and liberals in the House and Senate. But the shaded colors, the pink and the blue, talk about the variance, again, the spread around that meaning. There is very little, right? There is, there are no places, it seems to me, very few places for a link. There are no places, it seems to me, very few places, for Olympia Smiths, and even Susan Collins, it seems to me. And on the Democratic side, very few spots for modestly conservative Democrats in the House and Senate these days. And in our Q and A period, if you want to come back to why I think that's true, I'll put you back. But one thing's for sure, is we're a polarized nation, right? Scholars have wrestled with whether or not polarization is a function of just elites being louder, or whether it's happening across America. It's happening across America, and it has real implications. Well, another one, I've got eight, if you're wondering. I don't have 16, if you're... The next is the end of realignment. So there was this idea that there are big elections in American history, and these elections transform the party systems, who's in charge, and in some instances, transforms the nature of the party. The best example of a realigning election probably be 1932, right? So Hoover's in office, he doesn't do anything about the Depression. FDR comes in in 1930, then 1932, the Democrats come in, and they transform the government. And in doing so, they create a New Deal coalition. So that's a period of strong Democratic control that lasted for a long time. I know Eisenhower's a little bit of an exception, but really, Democrats ruled the day all the way through the 1960s, an example of a realignment. In 1896, McKinley versus William Jennings Bryan, the Republicans controlled the government before and after that election, but what the Republican Party stood for changed dramatically after McKinley's election. It went from a party of a sort of more agrarian, sort of progressive Republican Party, the party of Lincoln, to a pro-business party, a laissez-faire pro-business party with McKinley. But what's happened since 1968? Well, we don't get these clear defining elections, right? You can have a really big event, Barack Obama wins in 2008, Nancy Pelosi wins, Democrats take control, but two years later, it's over. Two years later, Nancy Pelosi becomes minority leader instead of speaker. So many scholars have said that the age of realignments, and this is one of the most famous books on that, is over. We're not going to see these sorts of big changes again. Next slide. In fact, this is one of the books that talks about it. We should no longer think of elections as these periods of transformation, but sort of one-offs. I'm not sure that's true anymore. I think, and we were talking about this during breakfast, I think the Republican Party, as you all know, is going through a serious period of introspection. The Republican Party is falling apart, in my opinion. There are wings of that party that cannot understand the other side, and Donald Trump's a good example. Over and over and over, establishment Republicans could not imagine Donald Trump. One of my good friends and media commentators from Colby, Amy Walter, who's on, she's with The Quick Political Report, she's on everything, many of you all know Amy. I heard her say at one point, I guess in late fall, she said, "There's a less than zero chance that Donald Trump would be the nominee." And Amy's a smart woman. A less than zero chance, she said. Something's happening in the Republican Party. The Republican Party 10 years from now will not look like the Republican Party today. Is that happening with the Democratic Party? Not as much. That's Debbie Wasserman Schultz, and of course Bernie Sanders. There aren't a feud right now over Nevada and the extent to which Bernie Sanders should get out. It's a bit of a feud, but it's not epic. Republicans are going through an epic-like change. I think they're going through a realignment. I think our ideas that parties won't dramatically change for the long haul, I think we've got to revisit that. Okay, I think there's one more. Speaking of realignment. Okay, one more, I think, I hope. The Responsible Electric. And this is the one I love your feedback on. It goes like this. If you're a political scientist, Vio Key is a Hall of Famer, right? He's like the Lou Gehrig of political scientists. And he had wrote this book, his last book, it's actually published after he died, called The Responsible Electric. What he says in this book is, the perverse and unorthodox argument of this book is that voters are not fools, okay? Many individual voters act in odd ways indeed, yet in large, the electorate behaves as rationally as we should expect. You see, during this time, the 1950s and 60s, there were a lot of critical political science, a lot of research suggesting that voters are like lemmings, following their partisanship or following an image, right? This is the rise of image-based campaigning, right? That John Kennedy figured elected because he's good-looking or something like that. But what Vio Key says is, they're smarter than you think. That in the end, as a group, not the individuals, but in the end, as a group, the American electorate does the right thing. Now, you might not like it because you're on the other side, but something is propelling him in that direction collectively is rational. I don't know. I honestly don't know. One argument should be is that Donald Trump has tapped into something fundamental in America, and Bernie Sanders too, that's fundamental that other politicians, other officials have not understood. And that his candidacy will be a rational reaction to all the changes that are happening. But I heard a woman in the focus group recently say that she's supporting Donald Trump because she knows him, because she's been watching him for so long on television. So I'm going to turn over questions if you have any. Those are eight rules that I think have changed.